Good evening. I'd like to call the August 10, 2023 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, and I will be presiding over tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Robinson for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Hope you'll join me in prayer. Spell our heads. Lord our Father, thank you so much for the day. We ask that you give us the wisdom and the patience to absorb this vast amount of knowledge that we have to look at. We ask you to give us the wisdom to make the correct decision that will serve all of our citizens in the city of Greenville. We ask you to bless those who are less fortunate than we are, and we ask you to bless those who are traveling to our community to play softball, and bless them while they're here, and bless them and let them just know exactly what the city of Greenville is about, and how welcoming we are to all people from all over the world. It is in your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Mayor, I would like the privilege of inviting a young man up. Tyler, would you come up for me, sir? My fellow councilmembers and those in audience, this is Tyler Wilkinson. He is one of our local board scouts, and he is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, may I have just the privilege of one minute?
Absolutely.
Can I get a picture with you, Tyler? Because I'm pretty impressive with all these badges and stuff. I'm sorry, I mean, I have somebody this impressive, and I've got to get a picture with it.
Okay.
Absolutely. I mean, this is just, it makes my day.
Tyler's here for a mayor badge?
Yeah, oh, what's your badge you're here for? All right. And those of you watching, look at this young man. I mean, that is impressive. That's a lot of work. All right, Tyler, let's get a picture together. Tyler, thank you. Good day. Good luck to you. I look forward to seeing you as an equal scout.
Thank you.
And just as a credit, Tyler and his dad, Brad, are friends of Rick Smiley, so I want to, I brought him down here and take the credit for, I want to give credit to my fellow councilmember, Rick Smiley, for getting him down here, and thank you for the privilege of letting me call him on.
Thank you very much, Tyler. We appreciate you being here. All right, we'll move on now to the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Okay, yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Protam Glover has let us know she will not be able to make it this evening, and Councilmember Daniels has also let us know she will not be able to make it this evening. Councilmember Blackburn?
Present.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
All right, Mayor Connolly of a quorum.
Thank you very much. Will now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
Mayor, I have no changes this evening.
All right.
If you don't mind, I have a request. Since we're missing Councilmembers Glover and Daniels, I would like to ask that we table item nine, since that is very important for their districts as well, as well as all of our districts.
I'll second that.
All right. So, do we have a, I guess, do we need to vote on that and then vote on the, or can we vote on it as to be revised to that?
Do you want to continue the item?
Is there consent to it? Because if so, okay, then yeah, move that we do that and approve the rest of the agenda.
But could we be specific about, is it continued until a specific meeting?
I say that given, we don't know when Councilmember, Councilmembers will be back, I would say we continue it until we have the full council.
Or maybe the next, was it Thursday meeting where we hold the public hearings?
Sure, that date, that date would be September the 14th.
There you go. So, prove the agenda is revised with the...
Okay. Again, to me, it's important that we have the full council. That would like, I would like to make that part of the motion.
Right. I think it's easier, Councilmember Blackburn, certainly the attorney can weigh in, is if we table it or continue to a date certain. If at that point you don't have the full council, you can table it again.
We can't make it part of the motion to have, until the full council is present?
We just won't know ahead of time, when we, when we put it on the agenda, if they'll be here or not.
All right, okay. So, I will make that motion, a motion that we continue until the September 14th meeting, when it will be considered, as long as all councilmembers are present.
Second.
All right, motion's been made. Probably second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
May I please revise the agenda?
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
All right. Let's move on to the next item, which is the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with a city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers.
Anyone here like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to appointments. Madam Clerk?
Okay, yes, sir. First board is the Affordable Housing Loan Committee.
I'd like to appoint Victor Ahuka to that committee.
I'll second that if required.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Give me the last name again.
Ahuka, I-H-U-K.
Congratulations, Mr. Ahuka.
Next board is the Board of Adjustment. Councilmember Smiley?
I'd like to nominate Tremaine McNair.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Congratulations, Mr. McNair.
Next board is the Environmental Advisory Commission. Councilmember Blackburn?
I'd like to appoint Kristi Dixon.
Anybody? Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Congratulations, Ms. Dixon.
Next is the Greenville Utilities Commission. First seat is for Mayor Connolly.
I'm going to continue that.
Okay, yes, sir. Second seat is for Councilmember Daniels.
She gave us a name last...
I'm going to make the appointment. On behalf of Councilmember Daniels, I'd like to appoint Wanda Carr.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Congratulations, Ms. Carr.
Okay. Next is the Historic Preservation Commission. That is also Councilmember Daniels.
And on behalf of Councilmember Daniels, I'd like to appoint Dr. David Denard.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Congratulations, Dr. Denard.
All right. Next is the Human Relations Council. That is Mayor Protam Glover.
And I'm going to act on her behalf, and I would like to nominate George Cherry on her behalf.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Which, which term? Congratulations, Mr. Cherry.
It matters which term, because one of them's an unexpired term, so if you give it, put him in that one, it's a long, he gets to serve longer. Is that the intent?
So, we would put them in Rod Debs, the first one, ineligible, yes. Okay. Next is the Multimodal Transportation Commission.
I'd like to continue that appointment, please.
Okay. Next is the Airport Authority. Councilmember Smiley?
Yeah, I have a, I would like to appoint Mark Porter.
Requires the second.
Oh, second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Okay, motion passes four zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Porter.
All right. Next is the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority. Councilmember Smiley, you have a city member in two counties.
There are, all three are of the sitting members are eligible for reappointments, so Candace Hollingsworth, Brian Lex Lester, and Robert Scheck. I would nominate all of them to be reappointed.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by everybody in council. By Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
All right, motion passes four zero.
Congratulations, Ms. Hollingsworth, Ms. Lester, and Mr. Scheck.
Okay. Next is the Planning and Zoning Commission. First seat is for Councilmember Blackburn.
I'd like to appoint Zach Woodmansey.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Woodmansey.
Next seat is for Councilmember Smiley.
I'm going to continue that.
Okay. Next is the Police Community Relations Committee. That's a direct appointment, and that is for Mayor Protam Glover. We will check with her next month. And finally, is the Youth Council, also for Mayor Protam Glover, and we will check on that next month. And that concludes the boards and commissions appointments.
Thank you very much. What, appointments to the Pitt County Human Relations Commission?
Yep, and open to any nomination from any member of the council.
Any nominations?
Definitely want to work on for next time.
All right, I guess that's continued.
Okay. All right, and that concludes the appointments.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to new business, which are the public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearing adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side of no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing or to the city council during discussion. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing, as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Madam Manager, our first public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three is an ordinance to annex Brook Hollow, Section 5, Phases 1A and 2, property involving 13.7 acres located along the northern right-of-way of Dickinson Avenue Extension and the current terminus of Dorset Drive. Chris Kelly with the Planning Department will provide the presentation. Mr. Kelly?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening. This property is located in southwest quadrant of the city. More specifically, this property is located along the northern right-of-way of Dickinson Avenue Extension and at the current terminus of Dorset Drive. The current city limits is shown in green and the requested annexation shown in red. This property is located in the Green Mills Run watershed and will require 25-year stormwater detention. This property is also located in a primary service area and a preferred growth area on the tier growth map and is located in City Council Voting District Number 2. The anticipated development for this site is 17 two-family lots and 61 multifamily units with an estimated tax value of $18 million. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Kelly? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion?
To approve?
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much. Item number four?
Thank you, Mayor. Item four is an ordinance to annex Covington Downs Subdivision, Lot 3, Block B, property involving 4.650 acres located along, located between Turnberry Drive and Smithwick Drive and near East Arlington Boulevard. Again, Mr. Kelly?
This property is located in the southeastern quadrant of the city. More specifically, this property is located between, between Turnberry Drive and Smithwick Drive and 250 feet east of East Arlington Boulevard. The current city limits shown in green, requested annexation shown in red. This property is located in this fork swamp watershed and will require 25-year detention. The property is also located in a primary service area and a preferred growth area on the tier growth map and is located in City Council Voting District Number 4. This property is anticipated to yield 72 multifamily units with an estimated tax value of 15.4 million. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Kelly? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for, for discussion or a motion?
To approve.
I'll second, but I do have a question.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Blackburn. Any discussion? Councilmember Blackburn?
Thank you. Just my question is, I know we've done a couple of annexations in that area. Is there still some unannexed property right around there, or is this, this got it all? I'm just curious.
So, this annexation request will fill in that little square where the red is. The non-color map right there is still not annexed.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No problem.
All right. Any other discussion? Motion's been made, probably second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item five.
Thank you, Mayor. And the next item is an ordinance to annex Fairfield subdivision, Section 2, Lot 12, property involving .353 acres located along the northeastern corner of the intersection of Davenport Farm Road and Garnet Way. Again, Mr. Kelly?
This property is located in the southwestern quadrant of the city. More specifically, this property is located along the northeastern, oh, excuse me, located at the northeastern corner of the intersection of Davenport Farm Road and Garnet Way. This property is located in the Swift Creek watershed. The property is located in a primary service area on tier growth map and is located in City Council Voting District Number 5. This property currently yields one single-family residence with an estimated tax value of $72,000. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Kelly? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Stacey Smith-Nay.
All right. Thank you.
That property there for 884 Davenport, the seputane failed, and it was not repairable, so we had to connect with the city sewer, sewage.
Awesome.
Welcome aboard.
You're doing a great job. It's always tough to go first, right? Yeah.
I have city sewer too. It's awesome.
Does anybody have any questions? Oh, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, those who speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion?
To approve?
I move that we welcome these extraordinary citizens to our city and annex their property per their request.
Second.
Agreed.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. Any other discussion?
They seem like, they seem like great folks. I, I can't, I don't know them personally, but I do want to say, I'm very impressed. We totally do this. I urge your support in this vote.
Awesome. Awesome. All right. Motion's been made, probably second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Welcome to the city.
Welcome to the, yeah, welcome to the city.
You guys are true Greenvilleian, city limit people.
And we appreciate you coming to do it. You know, that's really cool.
All right. We'll move on to item number six.
The next item is an ordinance to annex GCO Properties LLC involving .95 acres located south of Marine Drive and near and east of northeast Greenville Boulevard. Mr. Kelly?
This property is located in the northeastern quadrant of the city, more specifically, south of Marine Drive and 350 feet east of northeast Greenville Boulevard. The map here shows the current city limits in green and the requested annexation in red. This property drains into the Tar River. If stormwater rules apply, 10-year detention will be required. The property is also located in a primary service area on the tier growth map and is located in City Council Voting District Number 1. This property currently yields one, yields one building with an estimated tax value of $300,000, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Kelly? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. I thought our city manager was about to speak. All right, seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Did you kick him out?
We thought you were going to speak.
Ginger's got a whole story out of this.
Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion or a motion?
To approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
We'll move on to item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is an ordinance requested by the Redeeming Faith International Ministries, Inc., to rezone 5.84 acres located along the northern right-of-way of McGregor Downs Road and west of Bee's Barbecue Road, from medical residential, single-family to residential. Chief Planner Shante Gooby has the presentation. Ms. Gooby?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This property is located in the northeast quadrant, northwest quadrant of the city. It's located near the intersection of McGregor Downs Road and Bee's Barbecue Road. This is a photograph of the property, so this is from McGregor Downs Road looking north. Bee's Barbecue would be to your right-hand side. This is a survey of the property, so it is almost six acres. The property is located in the Schoolhouse Branch watershed. If, if stormwater is required, it will require 10-year detention and also nitrogen and phosphorus reduction. The property is not located in a special flood hazard area, and there are no jurisdictional wetland streams or buffers on the property. This rezoning could generate a net increase of 488 trips per day. Currently, this property is zoned MRS, and that's a single-family-only district. Under the current zoning, the property could accommodate about 17 single-family residences. This request is for multifamily, and it can accommodate about 60 multifamily units. Estimated build-out probably two to three years. So, the Future Land Use Plan map does recommend office at the corner of McGregor Downs Road and Bee's Barbecue Road, and then it transitions into office, which is this pink that you see to the north.
You said it recommends office? Did you mean commercial?
Commercial at the corner, office to the north. Oh, did I say it wrong? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I got myself tripped up. I apologize. And so, in this instance, I'm going to show you a bigger version of this. The property that we're talking about tonight is this blue star, and you can see that from Bee's Barbecue Road all the way to the bypass, most of, almost all of this is shown as office exclusively. This plan, of course, was adopted back in 2016. We haven't done an update in a while. And so, what we have filling into this area already are residential properties. We have Carter Ridge, which is single-family coming online. This subdivision alone is going to be about 300 single-family homes. We also have multifamily here, and this is going to be about 150 townhomes. And then, where you see Mill Ray Stride, that is going to be filling in very soon with some more apartments, and that's called Nexus Mill, Nexus Mill Apartments, and it's for 250 multifamily units. My whole point in bringing this up is that due to COVID, people working from home, there is very little demand or need for office. And even though our plan shows office, I really don't think that, that office is going to materialize in this area. You also have got office directly to the north, and then ideally at this hard corner, you're going to get commercial to fill in. And so, so in this instance, staff's opinion is, is that the request is with the intent of the land use plan, that it does still have some transition from commercial. It's going to fill in the void between the corner and the existing multifamily to the north. So, at the June 20, 23 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend approval of the request, and staff recommends approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Gooby? Councilmember Blackburn?
Just one quick question. You said at full build-out, it will accommodate how many buildings?
This request, about 60.
60?
60, yes.
That's what I thought you said. I was like, oh, that's a small place for all that, but...
It is. It's about six acres.
Uh-huh.
I appreciate that you are navigating and by, based upon where Bee's Barbecue is. It's a big help, you know, that we can, if you tell us everything in relation to where Bee's is, that'd be helpful to it.
Everybody knows where it is, right?
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number eight.
Thank you. The next item is an ordinance requested by Elliott Sidewalk Communities to increase density standards for mixed-use industrial districts from a limit of no more than eight multifamily units per acre to allowing multifamily units with a minimal habitable floor area per unit of no less than 400 square feet for one-bedroom unit and 500 square feet for a two or more-bedroom unit. Again, Ms. Gooby?
So, the Mixed Use Institutional District was established in 2020. The city worked with ECU on developing standards that would allow a mix of uses in a large campus-style setting. This would be an area where people could live, work, and play. This concept was based on, based on an institution, whether it be ECU or even a hospital, that would own or be in control of a large-scale project. This map, or, I'm sorry, and this was in anticipation of the ECU millennial campus designation. Currently, this is all the mixed-use institutional zoning we have in the city, so it's all shown in this magenta color. It's south of Tinsley, and it is to the east of the railroad tracks, and it is, this piece is about 20 acres in size. When the district was established, there wasn't necessarily the, the firm thought that there would be residential there, so a residential component was added, but it was what I would consider a low or medium-density residential component. So, on the right-hand side, I have the current standards of what's there today, and these standards are based on acreage, and so it allows eight units per acre. And then this is broken down into basically the minimum lot size. So, again, eight acres or eight units per acre. Under, well, let me, let me just switch over. And then I'll also go ahead and say that the minimum requirements also give a minimum size of the unit itself. So, if it's a one-bedroom unit, it has to be at least 650 feet, and if it's for two or more bedrooms, it has to be at least 1,000 feet. So, the proposed standards are to not have... have a minimum lot size per dwelling. So again, this is not for development. That would be horizontal. This would be for development. That would be vertical. So that's why you don't have an acreage standard. What this also does is this, this decreases the minimal habitable size for the unit itself. So a one-bedroom unit would be 400 square feet, and two or more bedrooms would be 500 square feet. These standards are very similar to the standards we already have downtown. They're not exactly the same, but the minimum-size requirements are, are exactly the same as what we have in our CD district. And again, this is literally across the street, Tenth Street, from the downtown, from the downtown area. So in staff's opinion, this request is in compliance, specifically in our Horizons Plan. It talks about Goal 1.4, which is a vibrant uptown, and Policy 1.49, which says, "Work with ECU on millennial campus in uptown. There should be a harmony between the needs of the university and plans of the city, and campus buildings can contribute to quality design in uptown." And the Planning and Zoning Commission, out there July 18th, 2023 meeting unanimously voted to recommend approval of the request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, Councilmember Smiley?
So with regard to just the residential piece, right, I realize that MUI has multiple uses, but if it were, if, you know, what would be those numbers you showed us for, like, if, in a high-density residential zoning in terms of, I assume there'd be no lot-size requirement because you're, again, you're expecting vertical growth, but what are the one-bedroom, two-bedroom minimum sizes?
I'm trying to map this to, you said it maps to CD pretty closely. I'm just curious,
the other residential zonings in the city, the high, have, high-density stuff?
So the highest, the highest-density, the highest-density district we have, when you're looking at something that's going horizontal, would be 17 units per acre.
And what about minimum habitable floor, floor areas?
It, it's the same as what's on your left-hand side. It still has the same minimum, minimum size of the unit.
So 650 and 100 is the standard?
1,000, yes.
And then the 400 and the 500, you said, mirrors?
Downtown.
The CD?
Yes.
So from a standpoint of, from that measure of density, i.e., how small, how large the build, the facility, the, the apartments have to be, the CD is actually the highest, the CD zoning allows the smallest habitable floor areas.
Exactly. And, and I'll say that these standards and the CD district, they're not identical twins. They're fraternal twins. And what I mean by that is they have different parking standards. So the parking standards for this new district is actually one space per unit. Downtown, I think, is three-quarters.
And what's the, just curiosity, why, why the difference?
We have found over the years, and I'll let the applicant address it too, because this is his request, that with some of the lower parking standards, some of the developments still do not have enough parking. And so they're either adding additional parking or leasing additional parking spaces. So that was the idea behind it, to just go ahead and make it one parking space per unit.
I'm sorry, I have no other question. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Gooby? Councilmember Blackburn?
I do. Thank you for this information. You mentioned that these are considerable changes for the residential requirements and the residential sort of framework. Is this going to fundamentally change the prod, the, the campus and how it looks and how it grows?
I'll let the applicant answer that, but I will say, this is really intended where you don't have to have one single building relegated to one use. So you can still have the classrooms, and then you can put the residential on top, and this is going to allow you to go up. The old standards would have still allowed you to add some residential, but you would have been greatly restricted in the number of units that you could have gotten because you're basing it on acreage.
So within the new standards, you probably have the flexibility to do the previous standards, but you also can do the new standards. In other words, there's a greater, you can have a greater mix of housing sizes.
This gives much more latitude in, in their project and how it would work, and it's not inhibited. With the current standards, they would strictly be held to eight units per acre.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Good evening, all. Hi, thank you for allowing me to be here. And my name is Tim Elliott of Elliott Sidewalk Communities. I want to talk about two things about economic development. One, I guess I should have done in public open period. It's, it's a great anecdote about economic development. So I was flying here this morning on Southwest to Raleigh, and I drive here. So we're on the plane, and I get to open up my cellphone and watch TV. So guess what I watch, right? Little League Softball World Series. But what was cool, we're 20,000 feet up, and there were other people watching it. And it was cool to know that there are people around us on the plane in Southwest watching that great activity, right, for these young athletes that are here, especially it was a female softball game, and the place was filled, and the plane was cheering for the team. It was great. I don't know how it turned out. I know it was Texas or Greenville. Didn't look good at the beginning of the game, but nonetheless, I did want to point out to you that these are the things that bring culture to town and economic development. I'm proud of the city and for us being associated. And I want to, and I know you all work hard with that every year, so hats off to you. Just a public comment about economic development. Speaking of economic development, we, as the developer, with partnership with ECU in developing Intersect East, we have 19 acres to fill down there. Everybody's wondering, gee, what's happening? It's been sitting there, but we're not sitting there. You don't see what's really happening. One of the things is, is that we all know that at the moment, economic development for office is awfully difficult. We were ready to close in October on three of the historic buildings, and since then, the interest rates have risen four times, and our construction prices aren't commensurate. Used, used to be in the good old days that when interest rates rose, construction prices came down. Not happened. So it makes it difficult, and we're working with lenders who, if you say office, it also becomes a dirty word. They just are trying to avoid lending to office. I have to tell you that. That doesn't mean we're not committed. We do have committed tenants, by the way. There is a 3,000-square-foot user in there now, and we have signed up a 54,000-square-foot user now, who will bring 100 people, but I, they request not to have a big deal named until the complex is done. And so that will happen this fall. We'll do a big, big, big splash. But I think you'll be highly pleased to know that there's economic development going on. Speaking of economic development, we are still working on the office situation. We still have committed folks. We just have to get a, a lender to come along with us. We're talking with national lenders who are, are in conversations with us. So that is happening. We're not ignoring that. So we have to kind of pivot a little bit. So when we do that, multifamily, we created a, a plan where we want to have a live, work, learn, play environment, right? Our, our mantra is campus commerce, community culture. We're there to merge all those things. So we're throwing a little bit of culture. We're throwing a little bit of office research, but we also want to throw in some residential. Oddly enough, Wall Street and the lenders love that product, right? And a question was made. I see 400 and 500 square feet. I could tell you, while that's intriguing to a developer, the market realities are, I can't build a two-bedroom unit for 500 square feet. Physically impossible. So, and we're not here to put up student housing. We're here to put probably faculty housing, young professionals, to be attracted to live, work downtown, right? We need downtown to, and I understand we're going from uptown to downtown, so I'm, I'm just going to say downtown. So we need this mixed-use opportunity for people walking on our sidewalks, the way Dickinson Avenue has come up. This is, I was involved with that in the early days in putting together the, the building there on Reed and Dickinson, the Dickinson Lofts, and was proud to see the economic impact of that of the entire Dickinson sidewalk experience. And we intend to continue that mode in our project here. To do that, we have to have bodies, and eight residential units per acre on the, by the way, we're thinking of moving it from 12th Street against those cottages all the way up to 10th Street. We didn't want to overoppose too much on that, that, that residential community. So we want to put it on 10th, and, and quite frankly, when you come over the bridge, see activity, right? And for me, as a developer, the marketability's too palatable. Yet to see that my fill-up might happen better, and it'll be an exciting project. We're not here to talk about the site plan of that. We're here about a text amendment that allows me to get the density to finance the project. Probably between 130 units to 140 units, four-story over, over what's called a podium to allow parking to attend. Now, the parking, we have increased the requirement of downtown parking. Be great to have three-quarter of parking space per unit, but what does that mean? That, that would easily push it to student housing, frankly. And we're not doing four-bedroom unit with one living room and two baths. That's, that's not what we're doing. We're here to attract a, a mature crowd. Not that they're immature at the university, but we're here to, to let people live, work downtown. We desperately need that here. There are other developers looking at that, and we want to be among that crowd. But we think it's a proud moment to come over the bridge, see a nice architectural background. You've seen the architecture that we're, I'm able to do, and I continue that tradition, and I ask your assistance and allowments to increase the density to make that happen. So three-quarters of a car per unit would be lovely for a developer. You know, it doesn't mean I have to park that much, but the reality is, we have to sell the units to a more mature crowd that, as much as I'd like to say this is a, an urban city where we can walk everywhere, it's not, it's, it's, we're not there yet. So I, I made a commitment to increase the parking requirement so, as we can market the building. So that's, that's why that was happened, though. Councilmember Smiley. So there we have it, and I, I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Elliott?
Can you answer?
There you go. Anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion or a motion?
That's your per second.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Blackburn. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
We are going to leapfrog over number nine and go straight to number 10.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 10 is an ordinance requested by the Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the zoning ordinance to add a microbrewery and a micro-distillery as a special use to the following districts: CD app, CG, CH, and add a micro-distillery as a permitted use in the MUI district. Again, Ms. Gooby?
So if you'll kind of ignore a few of my slides, I had this set up where we could do all three items at one time in a large presentation, because they're all related, and then have separate public hearings and separate votes. So you're going to see me flip through some slides click quickly that have to do with item nine.
So do you think you might speak in opposition? Because you're going to have to do this again?
I am here to please. So when you, if you see me flip through a couple of slides, I'm, I'm not trying to be quick-handed. We're just trying to go through what we need to do. So I want to give you just a, a little, little background, just to kind of bring you forward. I don't want to go deep into this and do a lot of detail on the history, but I do want to set the stage for how we got here. So if you'll remember, the first conversations that happened was when the city hired Hunter, Hunter and Associates to do an assessment of the 500-foot rule, and that started in April 5th of 2021. And it, the question was how the, the 500-foot rule relates to bars in the downtown area and attracting new businesses. So out of that report, there was one specific thing that came out, and they actually highlighted in red, which was that they felt that the 500-foot rule needed to be phased out in order to improve conditions and encourage investment in the city. Also during this time that we talked about it, July 7th of 2022, there was some new state legislation, and so that was also rolled into the text amendments that staff was working on. So these next few slides are just of meeting dates, and I've color-coded them again, just, just so you can see what the meetings were. And again, this is just really to highlight the, the meetings that were held. So any meetings that you see in the black text, that means it was a city council meeting. Anything in red means it was a stakeholder meeting, and then anything in blue was a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
And may, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm a little confused because we're not talking about the 500-foot rule. We're talking about the text amendments having to do with microbrewery, micro, micro-distillery, and then wine, craft beer, and keg shop.
We're, we're getting there. Because they're, they're all alcohol establishments, right? So we're doing 10 and 11.
Because we'll have to kind of redo all this when we reconsider it. I, I guess it would, I was thinking we would more telescope on, on the issues, the specific issues.
We're getting there. We're getting there. So, so what I'll go ahead and flash forward to was in January 12th, city council approved the bar 2022 use, and then they also asked P&amp;Z to consider some additional locations for a bar 2022 use, and about the separation distances between residential and places of worship. And then there was a second item that they also, that council also did, which was you deleted the DNE use, and then you allowed microbreweries and micro-distilleries as an accessory use to a bar. So over the last few months, from February to June, planning and zoning met over several months. They discussed that directive that was given to them by council. And in the process of having those conversations, the three text amendments that were on the agenda were originated from that. And so now I'm going to flip through nine, and then I want to get to 10. And so again, 10 is to allow microbrewery and micro-distilleries in some additional districts. So this is our table of uses, and this text amendment is essentially going to allow microbreweries and micro-distilleries. You'll see in the red texts. So you'll have a special use permit for each of those in the CDF district, the CG district, and the CH district, and then a micro-distillery will be a permitted use in the MUI. And what this comes out to again is this is mirroring what districts bars are allowed in, and then also just one thing we wanted to square up between the microbrewery and the micro-distillery use was that they were allowed in the same district. This map is showing you in red the districts that allow bars. It's not saying the property is available. It's just showing you the districts. This is the MUI district that we talked about just a little bit ago. So they would both be permitted uses in this area. So April 18th, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously, unanimously to recommend approval of the request. And if you're okay, I'm going to roll on to item 11. Okay? So item 11 is to take two separate uses, which is the wine and craft beer shop and the wine beer and keg store, and to make it into one use, which is a wine and beer store. They were both established in 2015, but they were established at different times. The idea behind both of them, though, is to allow establishments to sell wine and beer for off-premise consumption as a principal use, and also allow consumption of wine and beer on the premises. This does not have anything to do with spiritus liquor. I know this looks a little funny, but this is just an illustration of the differences between the two uses, and you see they're not the same. And so again, the intent is to push these uses together, make it much more simple for staff and a lot more simple for the public if they want to do these uses. This chart has a lot of information in it, and it is simply just talking about the differences between the two uses. And so I'm going to go to the next slide, which is, on the left-hand side are those current uses and standards, and the right-hand side are the new standards. And so I just want to point out a couple of just the things that needed to be, I would say, balanced. And so what I mean by that is, for the principal use, in a wine and craft beer shop, they could sell both, but the wine beer and keg store, they had to sell both. They didn't get a choice. Tastings, for instance, you, some had a choice of wine and beer, others was only beer. So the intent of this was to just balance it, make it straight across the board and easy for everyone to understand and not get easy for everyone to understand, and not get so down into the weeds. So, at the end of the day, all the districts that they're currently allowed in stay the same. None of the existing establishments are going to be negatively impacted. Under state law, there were a couple of things we did need to tweak, which was, we needed to remove hours of operation, and we also needed to take out any mention of cover charge. So, you can see all those uses are now, or all the different activities, I'll say, are represented under one use. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. Staff, again, both of these text amendments are in compliance with Horizon's plan under policy 4.31, which is to modernize and diversify the local economy. And then, just ignore number nine. This is just simply a summary of what P and Z did, which they recommended approval for both of those requests unanimously, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Gooby? Councilmember Bell?
Do cities that do not have a 500-foot rule have to have all of this, I guess, language about beer and wine stores, like, or do they just open as, you know, bars and sell beer and wine?
There are many cities that have a much more generic use of, like, what would be a tavern or a bar that encompasses beer, wine, and spiritus liquor. Through the years, we have sliced and diced and made all these separate little uses in a way to separate out beer and wine from spiritus liquor. So, it doesn't have to be this way.
And all these changes were made, like, post-500-foot rule, right? And like, all these, like, the beer and wine and keg store?
Yeah. These two, these two uses were established in 2015.
Yep.
So, again, you already have the 500-foot rule in place.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Blackburn?
To that point, liquor sales are regulated by the state, however. Is that, isn't that right?
We have to have ABC license, the same way you have to have a beer and wine license, but they're two separate licenses.
Right. And I guess my point is that these things are every day of the week are regulated separately and regulated in different ways. So, you know, there's a big difference between a micro-distillery and, you know, a place where, like, a martini bar. And so, I think that's why there are different regulations for them. And also, the state's regulating what goes into the martini bar, whereas we have a little bit more authority over, for instance, a microbrewery, micro-distillery. Do I have that right?
The ABC has control over the substance, right? Is it spiritus liquor? Is it wine or beer? And they have their own set of standards, but a city can have its own set of standards of if they would like to put all those uses together or separate them. So, the state has its place, and then we have ours.
And I guess the difference is, however, as we found out in our discussions of bar 2022, when liquor becomes involved, we can't say anything about, for instance, hours of operation.
That is correct. We are preempted.
Whereas with some of these other types of establishments, microbrewery and distillery?
We're still preempted.
We can't have any, it's still the 2:00 AM shut-off regardless?
The 2:00 AM is only to sell. They could stay open 24 hours a day if they wanted to, but the 2:00 AM is a state law on the sale of beer, wine, or liquor.
Okay. Okay. And I was wondering if perhaps there were other areas that there were, there was a different regulating authority for liquor than for, say, the micro-distilleries, microbreweries? And it sounds like there really isn't.
No, it's still all under Chapter 18B and ABC.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Councilmember Bell?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment, and I know that, you know, staff did not, you know, direct themselves to go create all these different rules, but I feel like something like this specifically screams big government and why a lot of people have issues with government. It's like, as somebody who owns businesses myself, like, I can't imagine going in and trying to open a business and having to navigate through all these different intricacies that are involved in these three different agenda items. I never voted on any of this. That was 2010, I believe, 2011, 2015. So, it was a different council and different group of people, but I think these agenda items speak very clearly to, you know, big government and why a lot of people get frustrated. I mean, this is, to me, insane that people have to navigate through these to go and open a small business. They're all regulated by the state already, and that we're getting even further down in the weeds ourselves and convoluting it through a bunch of different, you know, a bunch of different rules and regulations that our council has put into place, or previous councils, I should say. I was not a part of that. But just want to go on the record and say, I just, I think it's crazy that we do this, but...
All right. Any other questions for staff before we open up the public hearing? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Well, if you want to come up and speak on behalf of the applicant, you can, or if you want to speak against it, I'll call the people against it. All right. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Name is Angeline Mitchell, and I just want to speak against it just because I agree that it may be confusion, and it's set up, I believe, in a good way. It's regulated to where the public also has an interest in coming into these places and doing maybe, like, tastings or whatever, or being a part of it just to be sociable. And when you mix sociableness and everything else together, the confusion, unnecessary things start to happen. So, I'm just totally against it. That's all I just want to say.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seen none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion. Councilmember Blackburn?
And I appreciate you for speaking in opposition to this. I'm probably going to support it, but I really hear what you're saying about the sociableness, and I'd like to just say a couple of words about that. I hope that this combination does not hamper that sort of social atmosphere of these establishments because they've done a really good job of that. You can go in and you can, some people want to buy their growl or full of a certain drink, but you also have places to sit down and visit and be sociable. So, hopefully, this will not hamper that. And if we find it does, we can always go back as a council and review it. I wanted to also say that to Councilmember Bell's point, that what we're doing tonight is simplifying, and so, this is actually a good thing to simplify and combine and sort of streamline this. But there's no question that beer and wine is, throughout our state, regulated differently than liquor, and treated differently than liquor, and perceived differently than liquor. So, I think the fact that we approach them in different ways is perfectly reasonable. And I also think that this is a step in the right direction, and again, hopefully, it won't hamper the ability of these establishments to have a good atmosphere at the same time they're selling other products.
All right.
This is a point of order. We're still on number 10, right?
We are on 10, yeah.
We have to have a separate public hearing for 11 as well?
That is.
Okay. Thank you. I move to approve the item.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
All right. Let's move on to item number 11. Is this just a, we've already done the presentation. Any questions for staff regarding number 11 before we open up the public hearing? All right. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve the item.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Blackburn. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
All right. Hey, before we go on to the next item, I just thought I heard something earlier today. I think it might be somebody's birthday today. Is that true?
I think there might be a birthday.
A birthday?
Perhaps that she planned her birthday.
Yes. Happy birthday, Ms. Gooby.
Happy birthday.
Thank you for spending your day with us.
We scheduled this meeting in your honor.
And she said, and she said, "We want you to end it in my honor."
Mayor, may I ask just one point?
Sure.
May we sing to her?
You, you are welcome to sing to her.
Solo.
As long as you don't, as long as you don't do that when it's copyrighted.
Because Ms. Gooby and I have such a connection, from me being on the Planning and Zoning, it just would not be fair if we didn't sing "Happy Birthday." So, I hope my fellow council members and show their appreciation will sing with me. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear John Day Gooby. Happy birthday to you.
Bless you, pitch that so low.
They did. Thank you for all you do for us.
Thank you. Bless you, pitch that so low.
I don't think anybody's going to be fretful that I may have a second career, so let's move on.
All right. We'll move on to 12.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 12 is a resolution approving Amendment Number Three to an Economic Development Agreement with Grover Gaming, Inc. and Vanilla Games, Inc. and Assistant City Attorney Danae Alexander has the presentation. Ms. Alexander.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
It's not your birthday, is it?
No, sir, it's not.
You're sure? You're sure?
She's never going to tell us what it is.
It's the 15th of never.
We can revisit this in October. Okay?
Why do I think it's September?
So, as City Manager said, this is an economic, Amendment Number Three to an Economic Development Agreement with Grover Gaming and Vanilla Games. As you all know, we have an economic development project in which we awarded Grover Gaming Job Creation Grant back in 2020. So, as you can see on this particular slide, the first agreement, like I said, was in February of 2020. They were on task to create 100 jobs, and the city was to pay them $1,000 per job, up to 100,000 per year. They were also tasked with investing at least $350,000 by June 1st of 2020. They have successfully achieved those goals. In January of 2021, we signed Amendment One with Grover Gaming, which allowed them, or required them to create an additional 200 jobs, and they were to invest an additional $12.5 million by January 1st of 2024. In exchange for this particular task, we were given, we allowed to have an additional two years of payment towards the Job Creation Grant totaling over seven years, or a period of seven years totaling $700,000. Total grant payments to date equal $155,000. Amendment Two solely added the addition of Vanilla Games, which is a partner company, to be able to fulfill the obligations that they were required to meet under the original agreement and Amendment One. And so, tonight, we're here to talk about Amendment Three in terms of them having an additional two years to be able to make the $12.5 million property investment that was required under Amendment One. And so, we would end up increasing, like I said, their time for reform to January 1st of 2026. And request of council was to provide them an additional two years in which they had to maintain the jobs created and also maintain the property investments. And so, that has been placed into the agreement. So, currently, as I've mentioned, Grover Gaming, they are growing rapidly. They are fulfilling their obligations. They currently have five facilities in the Greenville area, consisting of headquarters, administrative offices, development centers. They've got their warehouses and also a printing operation. They did acquire an additional facility in Aiden. It was the Menji's Bottling Plant that they've acquired. And so, as I mentioned earlier, they have successfully achieved their capital expenditures that were required under the original agreement, and they actually have an intent to now expand their headquarters here in the city limits, in their facilities at Greenville Boulevard. As you all probably are aware, the annexation that occurred earlier tonight is for this particular parcel in that facility, within that jurisdiction. And so, they're talking about creating another building totaling 30,000 square feet. And so, to be able to achieve that, they are requesting additional time, and like I said, that is an additional two years to achieve the $12.5 million investment. And so, with that being said, the recommendation is that you would approve Grover Gaming's request for the extension of time by two years to January 1st, 2026, to be able to make their $12.5 million investment in real property and improvements. And then, as I mentioned as well, that we would require Grover Gaming to maintain the capital improvements and jobs created under the original economic development agreements for additional two years in exchange for our approval of the request.
Councilmember Smiley? These, the jobs that are created, but these are, the agreement calls for those jobs to be created here in Greenville.
Right. So, in Greenville or the city's ETJ.
Okay. And there are documentation requirements associated with that, with that requirement to the agreement?
Yes, sir. That's correct. So, each year, they actually have to submit an annual certification to the city. And so, with that certification comes documents that they submit to the state to prove that they have, in fact, created these jobs and they're maintaining them. And so, that is submitted to the City Manager's Office for review before we approve the payment.
And again, but just to beat the point to death, it's certainly possible to, you know, do a lot of these jobs remotely, right? So, somebody could be, in theory, living in Ohio, wonderful state, but not the intent of this job program. But the goal, in order to comply with this, and I don't need chapter and verse as to how they do it, there is a documentation that those, the holder of that job is in Greenville or the ETJ.
Right. So, all of, they submit, it's a tax statement that actually goes to the state, and that same document that they submit to the state for paying taxes on these particular wages is what we request them to submit to the city to prove that these jobs are, in fact, here, and that they are paying the taxes here and whatnot. So, we require that documentation.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
I approve.
Second.
My goodness. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Move on to item number 13. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 13 is an application to receive funds from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. This requires that the council hold a public hearing for the grant application. It will not require approval of the council, simply the public hearing. I believe... I believe Chief Salz is available to address the council and answer any questions.
Mayor, council members, there, just, this is for background information. You've seen these numerous times come before you, usually annually. And this is the grant that we do in conjunction with the Pitt County Sheriff's Office. We manage the grant. The funds are split half and half. It's in a local agreement that's signed between both entities. That is ready to go, and it's jointly awarded. That's ready to go as well. We anticipate receiving our portion would be $26,761. There is no match, and we intend to use it this year to complete our upgrade of our tasers. The tasers that you have, are familiar with from previous approval, have met their end of life, and we have seen a significant value in that tool in terms of reducing injuries and being something that is very, very easy for us to justify the use of. And we'll be entering into a new five-year agreement, and this fund would be used in conjunction with appropriated funds for that. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have on it. Of course, we recommend approval. And as the manager stated, it requires a public hearing for the federal part of the grant.
All right.
So what you're telling us is you're tasing this equipment out?
Yes, that's exactly right. That was pretty good.
All right.
I'm not gonna sing with you, though.
Very cunning.
Can we, can we groan now?
Any questions for Chief Salz?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion? Or do we need to have?
We don't need that, you just have.
Okay, it's closed.
Do you need a motion? No, you just held the public hearing.
All right, we held the public hearing. We're good.
Great.
All right, that was the last public hearing. We'll move on to other items of business. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 14 is a discussion of balloon releases within the city limits of Greenville. This was a matter that Councilmember Blackburn asked to be have added to the agenda. I will turn it over to Councilmember Blackburn.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wall. This is an item that has been on my mind for a long time because of my own personal experience, but also because of the science behind the need for this kind of a discussion and a need for this kind of an ordinance that would prohibit balloon releases. I live in an area where there are a lot of cemeteries, and there's also the parkland. And I can't tell you how many balloons I find every day in trees, in the creeks, in the ground. And they, they don't go anywhere. These are Mylar balloons, and they'll be there forever. And on a personal note, I have found birds, especially baby birds, in nests that, one, one particular nest, I tried to rush to a rehabber. The baby bird's feet were tangled up in this ribbon from a balloon, and they, they didn't make it. So these balloons are released with the best of intentions. These are folks who are remembering loved ones and who want to honor loved ones. And I respect and honor that that, that is the wish behind these balloon releases. Unfortunately, what happens is that the balloons float up, and then they fall back to earth, where they become a terrible trash problem. They become a terrible environmental problem. And in the moment of release, when families are honoring loved ones, they probably are not aware of the devastation that it causes on the other end. So my goal is to create that awareness of what happens while also honoring that people want to remember their loved ones and to encourage other ways to remember loved ones. The mass release of balloons, it's as many as 100, 200, 500 balloons. And these go up, and they float away, and they do end up in our waterways, and they end up in our, on the ground in trees. And I looked into it, and many states have now banned balloon releases, including Virginia, right next door, Connecticut, Florida, Tennessee, New York, Texas, and California. And, and in the end of the day, it's really, these balloon releases come back, and they are just simply litter. I would also like to mention another issue that's sort of tangential, and it's certainly not within our purview, but I think it's very important for us to consider. When we look in a world where there are lim, where natural resources are not unlimited, there is a limited amount of helium. And helium is an, is an essential element for medical procedures. For instance, when you want to conduct an MRI, and when there are other kind of medical processes that, procedures, there, many of them require helium. And right now, we have, in addition to some of the other shortages that are taking place, we actually have a helium shortage. So this is actually having an effect on hospitals and their ability to care for people. So because of that, four of five helium providers in the United States are actually rationing their helium. So what I would like us to do is to, to consider and adopt an ordinance that would prohibit balloon releases within the city limits of Greenville. At the same time, that we can, as a city, provide alternatives that will allow people to honor their loved ones, such as bird seed, I know is often used as a way to, you can scatter the bird seed, and that's such a joyful moment to, you know, to, to engage wildlife in that way without causing any harm. So that's what I'd like us to discuss. And again, I'd like us to adopt an ordinance that would prohibit those mass balloon releases. Thank you.
And presumably, that would mean we'd have to ask staff to develop such an ordinance and bring it back to us.
Yes.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
I'll second that.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Smiley. Councilmember Bell.
Would, would a balloon release not already be considered littering? Any, anybody want to weigh in on that?
I don't think a balloon release would be considered littering. I think, I know from just some quick research, two cities have balloon release prohibitions. That's Wrightsville Beach and Serp City, North Carolina. But maybe the balloon, if police officers saw a balloon coming back down, which he's probably not gonna track the balloon. That's that person littered, but you know, once the balloon goes up, who knows where it's gonna end up.
Right, so how would it be enforced anyway?
I'm, I'm not certain. I do know that several, just smaller cities do have these ordinances, but how you enforce it, we would have to research.
Yeah, while I certainly hope that people are not doing this because it is harmful to wildlife, I cannot support something like this. I just talked about how, you know, government can be out of control sometimes, and this is a perfect example of it, so I can't support this.
If, if balloon releases are litter and littering is illegal, you know, it seems to me a good direction. And to the point about enforcement, when you see, you know, people with these large collections of balloons that are getting ready to release them, I think that the issue here is not, you know, wanting to, to worry about enforcement, but just to say, this is something that, within our city limits, is not allowed. And that gives people the message, okay, we're gonna find another way to honor our loved ones that doesn't have a harmful effect. Because I don't think anyone who wants to honor a loved one, their, their memory, or to celebrate an occasion, is gonna want to cause such harm to the environment, to, again, to baby birds. Turtles ingest these. And, and for people who eat meat and fish, fish ingest these. So we're all, in the end, if you eat fish, you're ingesting these pieces of plastic. Not only that, but it's killing fish, and it's killing turtles. So it's, to me, a next logical step. When we acknowledge that it's litter, we acknowledge that it's harmful, and we acknowledge that there's a helium shortage. It's a good next step.
All right, any other comments? I think I would side with my colleague, Councilmember Bell, on this one. I have spoke to some other council members that I don't think would necessarily be in favor of it, that are not present here tonight, so I would probably be shy to move forward without them present so they could voice their opinion, too.
Well, I think the, the motion simply calls for an ordinance to be brought to us, and we can obviously not pass it if it's brought to us, so it's, it's not really.
But I'd hate for the staff to work on something that the majority of the council's not in favor of.
No, I've talked to council members not present who were in favor of it.
May I offer a friendly substitute, that we tabled the motion to draft that until all of us are present? And again, I don't wanna have the staff to draft something, and then when it comes back for a vote, it doesn't get the right vote or enough to pass. I'd rather for everybody to be here and then express their comments and also their vote. Because I will, I will tell you, as I told you on the phone, I've got firsthand experience with this issue that it litters on our farm, and it's just a constant problem. And I don't, I mean, I wonder how many are released, but I know it's a constant problem because they don't go away. But I think in fairness to those who are not here, I would like them to be able to have a voice in it before staff goes off on this journey to draft an ordinance. So I would, I would move to table your motion until everybody's here, or the next meeting, September, whatever, 19th?
The next meeting is September the 11th, which is a Monday, or you could do it on September the 14th, which is a Thursday.
I would offer friendly, move to continue your motion till the 11th.
Or can we do it till the 14th?
Or 14th, whichever one's most friendly.
I appreciate your support for the idea. I think, and I will support your motion to table. I think that having a concrete ordinance before us will make that conversation that we have in the future more productive. But I appreciate your support, and so I'll accept that. Is it a friendly amendment at this point?
You can always bring an ordinance with you.
I'm not gonna, well, I could do that, but we have to develop our own ordinance, so, yes, I accept Councilmember Robinson's amendment or change. Do you have to do that as well?
No, I think you could simply withdraw your, withdraw your motion.
You've accepted his amendment, so I think if, if everybody's on board, you can just vote on it.
Yeah.
Okay. So the motion, the substitute motion becomes that we continue this issue until September 14th?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, yes, it's been motioned and properly seconded. Properly seconded by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Technically, the motion was by Councilman Robinson and seconded by Councilman, Councilwoman Blackburn.
Why, I need a substitute motion.
Okay, doesn't matter. I don't care.
Oh, the motion passes.
Yes, it did.
Perfect. All right, let's move on to item 15.
Thank you, Mayor. The final item is a discussion of supporting the North Carolina Department of Transportation's naming of the Southwest Bypass in order of former Senator Tom Taft. This was an item that Councilmember Smiley asked to add to the agenda. Councilmember Smiley.
Before you go on that, too, I kind of feel like this is under the same kind of view of having two councilmembers gone. We probably should discuss it when they're here. I mean, we can discuss it now, but like any type of action, it might be smart to wait for them.
I just introduced the item. I mean, it was the DOT, it's their, you know, they're the ones who named the road. It's their road. They own it. We don't own it. You know, there's an initiative in place to, for them to name their road this way. And they, and we were asked to offer a motion of support. It's not binding, doesn't carry any authority, really, doesn't require anybody to do anything. It was, that was, and it seemed like a reasonable thing for us to do. So my motion is that we offer a support, offer a motion of support to the DOT's initiative in renaming the road.
Is it, is it the way to? Council, can we do a resolution in support of naming?
I think the city could do a resolution. Like Councilmember Smiley stated, the state, it's a state road, so the state, you know, carries the day in terms of renaming it. It would just be a resolution and support.
It's up to them. If we do pass it, I would like to have a resolution that speaks about Mr. Taft's commitment to the community and all that. If we are deciding to do that, to have something to present to him likewise and present to the DOT for naming purposes.
Right, and we could bring that back if council directed that.
To Councilmember Smiley's point, I'd like to wait until full council's here before we have a vote on this issue.
That wasn't my point, actually.
That was mine, actually.
That was his point.
I mean, I appreciate waiting for, you know, other people, other, you know, other, the full council to be here to make, to make decisions about items which are, you know, which carry import for the citizens of Greenville. This is literally just a motion of support to ask the state DOT to consider this option, which they're already considering. It seems like belaboring the idea of, you know, spending a lot more council time on it. I think we've already spent more time on it than I actually thought we would.
I'll make a motion to adopt a formal resolution in support of naming the road and submitting that to the North Carolina Department of Transportation for former Senator Tom Taft.
It does list in the agenda items specifically that city council concurrence may be required since part of the Southwest Bypass is in our jurisdiction, so. I'm not saying I'm not supportive, I'm just saying, you know, it may be smart.
I'll second your motion.
Extra input.
All right, so a motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, seconded by Councilmember Smiley. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, we'll move on. Can we move on to the City Manager's Report?
You do. I have no report, Mayor.
How about that? Comments from the mayor and the city council. Let's start with Councilmember Blackburn today.
Oh, my goodness, in the hot seat. Just wanted to, again, talk about the Little League Softball World Series and what a wonderful event that's been for our community. I actually attended not one of those games, but another evening game with the Pro League. Is that what it's called?
Athletes Unlimited.
Athletes Unlimited. It was a, it was a, it was a college-level players, and they were just amazing. And the atmosphere was amazing, and it was, there was a cool breeze. It was a perfect evening. So just to congratulate all the folks who've come to Greenville, and I hope they had an exceptional experience here. And of course, to congratulate our staff on the job that they did, making sure that we were impeccable hosts. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Smiley.
I'll just thank Tyler Wilkinson for coming and for staying for the whole meeting. That's actually an achievement for people who usually visit, so well done. And you should come back again. We've, we enjoyed it. Thank you.
You need to give him a badge.
We're gonna arrange for that, yeah.
All right, Councilmember Bell.
No comment.
Councilmember Robinson.
You know, I'm never in a loss of words most.
All right.
First, I want to say that to Councilmember Rose Glover, we, we miss you and look forward to seeing you soon. Get well quick so you can get back. And also to Councilmember Daniels, we miss you likewise. I want to share a couple of experiences that I had as I was sitting down for the mayor. He's the popular one. I just kind of, he's the one that gets everybody's attention, but the Little League Girls' softball, this is amazing. I mean, when I say it's amazing, I sat down there and watched these young ladies play ball with amazing enthusiasm and sportsmanship. But as I was talking to some folks down in front of me, there were like a group of seven or eight family members. And as I continued to talk with them throughout the progress of the game, I learned that they were all from Virginia. They had come down on Sunday, and they were staying here through Thursday. And the interesting point, none of them had anybody that was playing on a team or a relative. They were here simply to look at the sport. And they had driven all that way to come to Greenville, North Carolina, and stayed Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday to watch this game. And I think that is a tremendous compliment to what Greenville's been putting on. But it's also a segue, and if you build it, they will come. And everybody knows what I'm talking about, sports complex. We need to, we need, Greenville really needs to get on the hoof with that. We're getting outpaced by those around us, and Wilson, Rocky Mountains, I shared with Ann Wall. I was at a gathering about a week ago, and some folks from Rocky Mountain, Wilson, were talking about their complexes. And I said, the only thing it's gonna be known for in a couple of years is you drive past it to see the one in Greenville. So I'm really gonna push this council that we need to move forward with quick speed to try and get a sports complex, and not just a sports complex, but one that will be the showpiece in North Carolina and draw attention up and down the East Coast. Because look at what this Little League World Series does. And take that and ramp it up and do it every weekend. It's amazing. Other thing I want to do is to Don Otten and his staff and Public Works and the Police Department and the city staff and city employees, go see this ballgame. It's amazing the way it's run with precision. The game didn't start on time. It is nothing because of anybody's efforts. It just went long. But once that game shut down, the staff went in that field, cleaned the bleachers clean, repainted the field and drug out all the dirt to make it like it was a brand-new ballgame and a brand-new field, and did it, Mayor, what, 30 minutes, maybe?
Quick.
With that.
Yeah, not even that.
And so what, what an amazing. And so what an amazing thing for the city to have. And what we need to do is make it bigger next year, have more stadiums so we can bring more people. Because what, that's a gem, and I just want to say it's a wonderful thing and thank everybody that's been working so hard to make it happen and to continue to make it happen. And I think that's about all I want to say. Yeah. Thank for all the teams coming in and playing, too. And by the way, our girls are winning. They play tomorrow, Mayor, 4 o'clock?
4 o'clock.
So everybody watching and those here today, if you can make it down there, try and make it down there. It's a wonderful, wonderful thing to see. But when you see that drone view overhead of our field, I would tell anybody, that compares to any baseball field, even on the professional level, when you look at the beauty of it. So with all that, I think y'all know where my heart lies. I appreciate the time to speak, Mayor, and that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
I echo everything he just said. So also, I think it is worth saying that, you know, thank you to Little League International for giving us an opportunity to be the host city of the Little League Softball World Series. I mean, that's an incredible honor for us to be able to, to be on the map and to be able to turn on national TV and say, "The Road to Greenville." I mean, it's pretty cool. Even if you don't like softball, you want to get on national TV, come down to Little, come down to the Little League Field down at Stallings and come out there because you're probably going to get on TV tomorrow. So our girls play at 4 o'clock tomorrow. Of course, this is a rerun, so people are probably going to be watching this for weeks, but I should say, probably on August 11th at 4:00 p.m. Cheer Our Girls on, they'll be on ESPN2. It's really cool. It's a great atmosphere down there. It's, it's a well-oiled machine. You know, I've, I had people that are from Greenville tell me that Greenville looks awesome right now, you know, as far as how it's being run and how well and how well-kept it is and how clean everything was. And so it's a testament to all of our staff, all the volunteers, our community in general, because it far reaches just the people that are there at the stadium or around there. It reaches our entire community because as they're out at stores and people are being nice to them and being friendly to them, welcoming them here to our community, it's a, it's a good first impression to them, and hopefully they'll be able to come back here. And like Councilmember Robinson had said, hopefully they'll come back here and take the time to come back here, even when they don't have a family member that's involved in the Little League Softball World Series. So great job, everybody. Excited to see it. It's going to wrap up on Sunday. The championship game's on Sunday. Hopefully, our girls from Pitt County will be playing in it.